All of these people, or these two of them, have they taken positions other way or other way? Places are just getting out of the business?
All three of them are moving to other positions. Matt Cole's going to City of Mason full-time, so he's leaving us for a little bit more money. James Gabbert has accepted a full-time, he's part-time firefighter for us now. He's going to...
Taylor, Kentucky.
Thank you. Taylor, Kentucky for a full-time position, so that's a good move on his part.
Other ways? What does that matter?
It's just...
Just south of there?
Yeah, it's just over there.
To south of Covington.
Yeah.
And then Tanda Langhart is taking a contracted position with the Department of Defense for medical massage. She does that, that's her other career besides us.
Very good. Okay, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Matthew Cole?
Second.
Mr. Mearsbaum?
Yay.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Yay.
And also accept the resignation of James Gabbert?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yay.
Mr. Mearsbaum?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Yay.
And the resignation for Tanda Langhart?
Second.
Mr. Mearsbaum?
Yay.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Yay.
Okay, and your monthly report?
Did you get that one?
Yeah.
You know, you laugh, I don't think I do.
Nope.
Definitely not that either.
I don't think I even got it.
It's one.
I'm not gonna blame it on my boss.
I can only blame one thing on Rob Arby.
My monthly report, nothing really is point.
It's pretty normal. Okay. All right, well, we see that a little bit, we have any questions for Cole?
Okay.
There you go. Anything else under the fire district?
That's gone, sorry.
Okay. Zoning department. We pulled the item number one, and then we have the appointments to the Warren County Regional Plains Foundation.
Yeah, this was the month where the bill comes out and they ask you to start thinking about who you want to have as your representative to that body ultimately. In times past, we've had a trustee, a zoning commissioner, administrator, myself, and we, last year when we got expanded out from four to six or two cycles, excuse me, we had a fire within that. Just wanted to give you guys an opportunity if you wanted to be a full member or an alternate, to let me know. At this point, I still have a call-out to the zoning commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals meets the same night as that, so they're not able to help out with that service.
If you have, I would certainly stay as a part-time alternate member.
Okay.
Part-time, whatever you want to call it. But if you're getting us by and you don't have enough people, be full-time, I would be glad to do that also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mearsbaum, talk with me briefly, I'm not sure.
I would answer that, probably, I want to go to the meeting tomorrow and see if that makes sense for me to participate.
Okay. Cool.
It's pretty interesting.
All right, so two out of three has an opportunity, that's awesome.
I'll stick with the Whining Creek stuff.
That's what I was gonna say, that's more than enough. All right, well, then I'll bring this back to you, I just wanted to get first blush, and if you guys had some people that you wanted to be in places at the next meeting, so that I have the responses from the zoning commission, because that did not come yet. So that's all I needed tonight?
Great. Okay, and you have your monthly report?
Yeah, we're up from last year because we had a snowstorm and freeze up. You did get it, though?
Yeah.
All right, both pages this time?
Thank you, bud.
Awesome. We're only up because of the weather from January of last year, but I can answer questions if y'all have any. Just to point out, we had our first opportunity at county court regards to some issues that we had with Bob Alrick, that actually was postponed until March, so I'll bring more information back in two months.
Very good.
So out of curiosity?
Yes.
When you apply for a pool permit, how long do you have to start?
No, that's a great question. All permits are good for a year.
Okay.
It's not uncommon for all the snowbound people to finally go to these trade shows and see stuff and immediately want it and to start that process. But you have a year. You have, once the pool is able to have water, you have a temporary fence or permit fence put up within that time, so we, excuse me, sometimes have a delay from actually someone putting it in to actually having it final because of weather.
Just unusual to see a pool pulled in January.
Well, yeah, and when they came in, I'm like, what's going on? We're ready to go, I've got two of them, I'm like, okay. It was a cold day also, so I'm like...
Those are people that have their glass half-full kind of...
Yes, they definitely have money set aside that they're ready to go when they get a good deal during this year.
I'm on a bid, committed it personally, took him up, took him up.
Clark, get the original.
That's exactly correct. So get the keeps-on given.
Any other questions or comments for the zoning department?
Not this time, so.
Okay, anybody have any more questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on to maintenance department. Good, how are you Scott? Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I'm enjoying the winter so far, actually.
No, we're...
One thing I wanted to bring up that's happened quite a few times over this last month is Trishawn Park, how the influx of people riding horses in there. They're coming in from the east side. So we did order some signs, we put several signs up, and we, they had a makeshift area, they were coming through, so we put some sign posts in, made a little barricade with a sign on, we had three or four people call, we went out, we seen footprints, and someone actually showed us pictures of horse droppings to prove it, so we went out and posted some signs up, so you may, you know, why can't we ride in there, it's the same thing that we grew several years back, so, but just so you're aware of it.
It's not that kind of park.
And then...
It's a great place to ride a horse, though.
How people figure out pretty easy who it was.
Yeah, we know, but... So, and then one other thing, I'd like to take an opportunity to discuss, several years ago, we had decided to start brine in the roads, and I thought I'd give you a little history and stuff on how well that's going. In the past, if you remember, we'd go out, we had snow coming, we would, you know, tone the spreaders down and lay just a layer of salt down the center of the road as more of a pre-treatment. Well, with the brine, it's about seven cents a gallon to make, and on average, for four, for four lane miles, it's like fourteen dollars to brine as a pre-treatment, as opposed to sixty dollars per salt. So it is a huge cost savings, and with what we put down, it's about a hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the township with the brine, so that's the kind of cost savings we're looking at. And it doesn't prevent us from coming in unless we get a really light dusting. It's more or less to help on the cleanup end, keeps it from bonding, and that's more or less what the, what we see that we gain from it the most is the time at the end cleaning it up, we don't get the bonding, we don't get the ice effect at the bottom and the blade scrape over. So I just thought I'd take this opportunity to go over that with you guys and let you know that it is a huge cost savings, and we were skeptical at first, but it does work on the end, but like I said, it's not gonna delay you from coming in. Some people will put it down and think, oh, we won't come in for two hours. That's not really the case.
Just builds enough heat to keep that ice up there.
Right, it keeps it from just the adhesion of it, and it just allows for a quicker cleanup when the event's over, and then the sun pops, it makes it go real quick, so.
We're gonna have a discussion on that from the county engineer when we go to the Zonings.
You know it. About beet juice.
That, yeah, this is beet juice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, Scott?
Not unless you have any questions, we're just having a lot of truck repairs, more so than normal, the salt's finally starting to get to some of our trucks. The newest large dump we have for the salt is a 2004, so that's a new list. We're just, we've been working on them every day, we've had compressors go out, we've had numerous things go out, it's one thing after another right now with the salt and the rust, it's catching up to us, so we've been busy working on the trucks, but...
Is there anything in the budget this year for a new dump?
Not for a new dump, no. They're up to about a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand now for a new dump, so. But we are looking into that, replacing them, and we have a 2000, a 2004, and two 97s. So if you remember, you were here, you guys got the 97s together. They're one number apart on the bin, so, but the bad part about it, it's easier to get parts for the 97s than it is for the 2000 and 2004. So it's a little backwards, but we found some new places, new vendors that have what we need, so we're able to carry on, but we will need to start changing them out at some point, or we're gonna get behind on them, get trouble.
Yeah, it doesn't do, it's not good to get behind on that, but it's gonna, well, we'll have to buy two or three at a time, that's not a good idea.
You know, this is something we've talked about, I know Bob and I have talked about it, we've got the ability to set aside money each year, just like you would for your own purchases from home, and you know, if there's, it might be a smart thing to do to set aside forty thousand dollars, you know, this year, and you carry it over just like you would a PO, so that you're not hit with a hundred and twenty thousand all at one time, so that might be something...
Something to think about. I think you guys actually leased the last two, the 2000 and 2004, so. Do you want to run some more?
Got it, bud.
Better than that, a hundred and ten to twenty thousand, tax out later, possibly. Something to think about, we have to look at the trouble. Oh, we call that the payments for all those.
Normally, well, if it was anything like the Bobcat or the Toolcat, you do four even payments once a year.
But, you know, what we did, what we learned on the Bobcat, though, was we were paying almost ten percent interest on that, so the lease was not the way to go on the Bobcat when we did that. We did that, what, six years ago, were you here when we bought the Bobcat?
The Toolcat.
The Toolcat?
Yeah.
Okay. We thought we were getting it over five, four, five years, but we weren't. Once we found out, you know, we did an audit on it, and I don't know that Bobcat was as forthright as they could have been with what was going on with that. It was like fifty-four thousand dollars, and it was, it would have been much, much cheaper for us to pay for cash out front for it.
Yeah, I've never seen a lease makes, makes sense for, if you wanna do something like that, if you have the money.
Well, yeah, 'cause we don't get a tax advantage to leasing.
Yeah, I think they floated that to us, that there was no interest, no nothing.
They did.
It was just four payments, they, they misled us on that from the beginning.
Okay, anybody have any further questions or comments for Scott? Guys are doing a good job. Moving on to staff reports, Jeff? All right, we have the camera discussion.
I'm not sure how much you want to have in-depth, what I have before you. We're again taping tonight as a test to see how we're liking things, if you like what you're seeing, no additional purchase. If you're wanting to go in and actually have security-style cameras that are hanging from the walls, then we have some costs associated with that that I can further discuss. So I'll leave it up to you guys to tell me what you like, how things are, we can go from there.
Other than the sound quality last time, I thought that was pretty good. I didn't see a great need to have additional screens, but that you mentioned is an option.
Okay.
Unless you guys... You know, I think this is fine, and the sound is okay for me, you just turn it up and...
Right.
I think it gets the essence of what we're wanting. And, you know, maybe we could put it on the website and invite responses or comments from people to take a look at it. Can you do that?
Yeah, I thought the quality was good.
I bet you. And the price is right.
Yeah, exactly, I really liked the price.
All right, well then...
So we can add audio/video to your title.
Sounds like a plan. So we did do a modification on the camcorder for tonight with the sound, so we're hoping that that actually improves some things. So I'm anxious to see how that comes out, if so, then that'll be what we'll do from this point forward. All right, very good, awesome, thank you.
Good job, Tim.
Great.
And IT consultant upgrades?
Yeah, just to bring you up to speed on where some things are, so that we can have discussion for final appropriations, basically, going on. In 2014, as you recall, we had a contract that stopped early, and during that time, we did a contractor to fill it, just trying to do as a Band-Aid. And during the fall, we tried to figure out what's the best way to solve our IT issue. Is it something that we just maintain with the contractor, go forth, something that we go back to managed services, or do we do the combination of the mixed contract with another contractor, do we bring someone to actually be IT staff? In lieu of that, we have various pricing points, various expectations, various things. At the end of the day, we're trying to maintain the system, try and fix some known problems, and do some projects so that we can continue to be current on some issues. Now, with that being said, you know, internally, we have our internal computer group that basically just wants things to work. I've talked to guys who are at that table, but you know, at the end of the day, they just want it to work, how can it work? What we're finding with our current staff of one person being part-time, it's not getting done. Projects that have been carried over from the last vendor have not been solved, and just doing main, maintaining day-to-day activity is sometimes a challenge. So we need at least a two-person group, that's why we're thinking about maybe going back to a managed service group that, no matter what happens, that group is gonna provide us a person. You know, the downside of having an onsite, full-time person, we still have to have someone to shadow them, know what's going on. Once they leave, we lose all that knowledge. So we talked about numbers and figures, you know, this is where it really comes down to the craziness. You know, to keep status quo as a part-time employee as a contractor, you know, we're looking at fifty-six thousand dollars a year. If we're looking at combining that person with a next level up, we're looking at a hundred and two thousand dollars a year. So those are the contract options. We look at managed services, and we have a varied range of seventy-nine thousand, eighty-four thousand, a hundred and eight thousand, and a group that we had three years ago that performed service for us for sixty thousand dollars, now wants to come back at a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. This is just the labor cost, no additional product. But talking with each of these vendors, they have a different slant on how the work can work, and that's truly what we're trying to get some guidance on this evening. You know, some have come in that changed nothing, I'll take it over, we'll make these changes, the like, others want some, not assurances, but some things changed in our environment, so that, first of all, it's to a standard that they're comfortable with, that they know that they can look at. Some things will be consistent.
Right.
And the like. And that brings, you know, the eighty-four thousand dollar up to a fourth, an additional forty-four to that, so it's a hundred and twenty-eight. So what I'm looking for tonight is, do you want an assessment done to see what is truly deficient in our system that needs to be fixed, so that we have that as a bidding process to say, come in, these things we definitely want fixed, if you fix more than that, great, but this is a bare medal that needs to be done, what is your cost and labor to make that happen? Or do you want us to go back, talk with these vendors, and bring back to you the top three vendors that are gonna do the job of fixing things as we feel they're going to fix things, whether they did or did not provide a quote-unquote assessment? And that's, that's where I want to have a feel from the bottom.
Where do you go to get an assessment, or can you do that in-house? Can you do that?
It's beyond, I have a good feel for what needs to be done, but some of the technical elements is beyond me. I have talked with a third-party vendor, that would be a vendor that would only come in and do the assessment. They would not be a participating quote vendor, so to speak, at that point in time.
What kind of cost is there for something like that?
They're looking at a two-day timeline to do that, so it's probably underneath five thousand dollars. I'm not sure where that price is gonna be based upon some levels of expertise that they're gonna have, but that's, that's a raw figure. Then I'll have more information at the end of the week to give to you, but that would be a rough.
It's expensive, that's...
But you have to have...
It's a necessary, yeah, it's a necessary, not even an evil, but it's just necessary.
Well, I'm sorry to jump in, I think there's potentially other ways to accomplish an assessment, I mean, there could be. Steven and I were talking about this, he, he has a son-in-law in the industry, and suggested Xavier UC, Wright State UD might have some students at a certain level in their career, you know,
In the IT.
Academic careers that might be willing to do this as a project-type thing. I do think it'd be money well spent. This is, this is growing, this is a need, you know, if we're talking about fifty-something thousand being the lowest cost we're gonna spend on IT, which is what we're doing now, it's only gonna grow, and there's, there's a lot of hardware needs, a lot of system needs.
Right. Is that fair, I mean, that's fair, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have known issues, and we have projects that were part of our last update that are not working the way in which they were supposed to, or they've not been completed. So, yeah, there's, there's stuff out there, you take care of, buy more expertise than myself.
I'd like to see a consultant or somebody do an assessment, so we'd have a little better idea of what really needs, not so you guys really know, not how, how you do that, whether it's through a university or if we hire somebody, just so we get it done.
You know, the county's doing the exact same thing right now, and I'm one of five people that's sitting on a board that's going to determine where we're going with that. I'm thinking we're paying five thousand dollars to have the entire county assessed. I don't remember the guy's name, Steve something or other, Matt Nolan, the county auditor. If you call Matt and tell him what you're looking for, he's gonna, I mean, they're coming in and assessing the entire county's...
Okay.
It might be something that we can even partner them on.
Are they a vendor, though?
Steve, I don't have any answer to that question.
I would prefer not dealing, getting an assessment from a vendor, 'cause he might be a full, Bobcat salesman that...
I understand that, but you can tell, you could certainly make a contract with somebody and says this will exclude you from bidding on this process, too.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You know? But, I mean, if he can cancel the county, I'm sure he can handle the township, yeah.
Another option.
So do you want us to go forth and spend X dollars to make this happen? Do you want us to bring back viable candidates for you to select for the assessment, how would you like first proceed?
What's our timeline on...
November is when we would have done this previously for the expansion of a contract. Yes.
Had I not started?
Yes, things were pushed from Mr. Ticket to Mr. Camera, and we're now at that.
It was wrong suggestion.
I know, I didn't think it was a suggestion, actually.
Why don't we, why don't we endeavor to bring back, if we find a consultant that does these types of systems assessments, we'd have to do something over, you know, the twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit anyway that you'd have to approve, so if we're gonna go that route, we'll have it on the agenda for next month.
Right.
Or have some other direction.
You might find a university that has...
Yeah, reach out to them.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of those schools who's stronger in the IT side of things.
I think they all have some component that...
Wright State or UC would say, I don't, I mean, Xavier's got a good business school, but I'd go to Dayton myself, but...
Shocked.
On your computer equipment, are you talking just computer equipment, you talking audio/video, you talking security, all of that being wrapped into one?
The short answer would be yes.
Okay.
I think we're talking the, the computer, you know, the audio/video is that camera and some of what he has, but those components that everything works through, you know, how we do our daily business? So the servers and the hardware and the connections between those.
So networking and all that.
Yeah.
But aren't we talking about two different things realistically? We're talking about an assessment on, on those, then we're talking about an ongoing opportunity on the IT side to have support.
Yeah, it's a support contract, and at this time of the support contract, there are projects that we want to make sure are done.
Sure.
And what's been brought to light through some of these vendor discussions, okay, there's probably more or probably less than what we were thinking about having to have done, so that they feel comfortable being in our environment. And some of the upgrades that you're talking about, you know, mean nothing to most of us, let's just go that route, but they have an impact to the reliability of the system, the speed of the system, those types of things that actually do have an impact. They think about, well, what does a router do, well, what, what I care if it's router X or router Q, you know, does it have power over ethernet capacity, who cares? Those are things that all are part of discussion elements.
Right.
That if we're going to move forward, those are things to discuss. And so I would be coming back with, this is the way in which we want to take care of our labor, after we know how much the labor plus X would be, so that they know what to begin on. So we'd be talking with a total package of X to do a 2015 computer project and later.
Okay.
Let me, let me dovetail that into, I got a few things that aren't listed here. One of them is I have copies of draft permanent appropriations that you'll see for next meeting, but here's the things highlighted. One of the things that you won't see in that is what we expect to spend on either a new IT consultant person and/or the hardware piece, that won't be in this. But, yeah, that, that conversation will come as well. Do we do a staff person, is it, is it someone we hire, is it, is it a contractor? What does that person look like, and if it's a company, you know, what, what other things are they supporting and how many days? So there's, yeah, there's the hardware, and then there's the ongoing support piece of the equation. Those, you won't see that in here, and I have copies of this for you, and this is, it would be a permanent appropriation that I put together for the twenty-third, your next meeting, and I've highlighted those areas where you have some differences from what was in the temporary. There weren't a lot, but some of the non-contractual salaries, you know, affect a number of things, but it's, it's only small pieces. And there's a couple items where we bumped numbers up that we kept low because we had the certificate number to keep under in the general fund. There's a cost projected for a website upgrade, so that's a discussion point if, if we want to push forward with redoing the website. So that's one thing I wanted to highlight that I had these for you.
I could just come on that, I mean, we don't really need to approve, to approve the permanent appropriations until, even March 31st is when the temporaries are voided. So does it make sense to hold off on approving this until we know what we're gonna do with the software or the, I'm sorry, the IT stuff? I don't care, it's up to you, but to me, it makes more sense to wait until we know what we're doing with permanents.
Unless there's questions about what is in here, and you still need to deliberate those things more, I would, I would say let's put them in place, and then you can supplement if, when we find out on the IT. I'd hate to wait, wait.
Well, there's just, but I don't want to get into a needless rush on this, because if nothing's, there's no way in three months we're gonna spend our temporary appropriations, or goodness knows we've got bigger problems than IT, but it just seems to me like, rather than do a supplemental, that if we just wait a month, we'll know what we're doing with IT.
I, I'd rather have it in place sooner than later, but it's the pleasure of the trustees, what they want to approve. So I'll, I'll present it to you for next meeting, and you guys can, if you got questions, it gives you a month to, to get it put in place, that's...
That's fine.
Two other things. One, I had asked about the flying for Warren County, is that something everybody's okay with doing, participating in, moving forward with?
I think, fine, do you want to go, is that a...
I've done it before, I think, honestly, it's either you or I to go, is what I was thinking in my mind, but if you want to go, that's fine, too.
It's basically for the DC lobby.
Oh.
Chris...
Is that the thing Mark Russell does?
Mark Russell and Chris Bezuta are doing one, their first one specific to the county, to Warren County, and they had sent an email out to a group that they thought would be of interest, and then we were one of those, and I called and talked to Chris Bezuta just to make sure I understood. And it's, it's to advocate on behalf of Warren County-specific things, it's federal, it's networking with your legislature, legislators there, as well as those others who are on the trip. So if we have any federal-type things that we'd want to have the group make sure they're making a point of, that's one thing. But they, they're requesting representation if we're willing to have someone go, so.
I think it's a decent idea, you know, we don't have any, anything going on right this second, but down the road, if we have established a relationship and a sort of a connection or contact there, it would probably go a long way to...
Doesn't hurt that.
I agree, I think, and you or Mr. Wade, either one, I mean, I, that's up to you two.
I did it for about ten years, we'd do it for three days with the independent insurance agency, agents of Ohio, and we've definitely made impacts of, but that was, you know, year after year after year after year, but it helps that they think, they recognize your name, they recognize you, it doesn't hurt a thing. It's good business, it's just good business. It's good business, it's just good business.
I think the value is what you just pointed out, it's, it's the networking with the county folks.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good for a number of reasons.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, then I will confer with you and.